Ready?
So the streaming is actually streaming not live.
Livestream.
It's not live right now.
It will be.
Oh, okay.
On Lakes Area TV and on the City of Forest Lake website.
Okay.
Yep. And then the recorded version will be on the League of Women Voters website. Hello and welcome to the candidate forum for the Forest Lake School Board. I'm Heidi Boyd and I'm a member of the White Bear Lake Area League of Women Voters and I'll be your moderator today. I do not live in the Forest Lake School District. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on their ballot. All candidates who filed to run for this position were invited to participate in the forum today. And today we have six candidates and they are Tessa Ann Thompson, Mark Castle, Rob Raphael, Jim Smith, Gail Tyson, and Daniel Tuat. There are two candidates who were not able to be here today, Julie Corcoran and Laura Durandju. There are four open seats for the Forest Lake School Board. To begin our forum today, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening comment of up to one minute. Our timekeeper will show warning signs of thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and then a stop sign. At the time, if you see the stop sign, you can finish your sentence. For opening comments, candidates will respond in alphabetical order by last name. Thereafter, the order of speaking will be rotated. Candidates will have one minute to respond to each question, but candidates, you don't have to use the full time. You can say what you have to say and be done, and that will allow time for more questions. Each candidate will have up to three opportunities to clarify information or rebut another candidate's responses. Each rebuttal is limited to thirty seconds, and a candidate may only use one rebuttal per question. When our questions are finished, candidates will have one minute for their closing remarks, and that will be in reverse alphabetical order by last name. The questions for today's forum were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League of Women Voter members. We are not going to use any questions that are unclear, hostile, or personal in nature. We may consolidate questions that fall in the same general topic area, and all questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. So we will begin with our opening comments, and we'll start with Tessa Ann Thompson.
Hi, well, my name is Tessa Ann Thompson. I live in Columbus with my husband and three boys, all of whom have been in the Forest Lake Area Schools, including Lionel Lakes Elementary and the Forest Lake Middle School. We moved here in 2012 and very much enjoy the community here and all the things it offers while giving that rural feel. We've had wonderful experiences within the school district through community ads, school-sponsored programs and events, and meeting many of our neighbors through my husband's honey and selling that to our friends and family as well. I'm running for school board first and foremost to advocate not only for my own children, but for the taxpayer and for your kids and grandchildren, the teachers in our community. My goal is to encourage increased community engagement and be more transparent about what is going on and advocate for academics. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. And next we have Mark Castle.
Thank you for inviting me here. My name is Mark Castle. My children have graduated in 2014 and 2017. And I had done many things with the school as far as chaperoning and helping out with the sports. And there were issues when my kids were in school, but it does seem like that the issues have increased or gotten worse. And my focus is academics. Children should be independent adults when they leave the school system. And one of the folks I've talked to during campaigning says that their graduate cannot even balance a checkbook. This does not seem like success to me, so I think it's time for a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. And our next candidate is Rob Raphael.
Yeah, hi, my name is Rob Raphael and I'm running for reelection to the Forest Lake School Board. I mean, for me, when I look at my time on the board, there's three things that I focused on. Number one, student achievement. We want every student to have a set of academics and teachers that push them as far as they can go academically. And so that when they graduate, they're fully prepared for what's next. Second, options for kids. It's critical that the education that kids get at Forest Lake is tailored towards them. And if we look at our STEM programs, our tech, our AIG, all those different programs like that, that's one thing we do great, but it's also something that I think is critically important for our kids. Lastly, I want to say that every student belongs. When a student comes to Forest Lake, I believe that when they walk through that door, they deserve to have a safe and welcoming environment that helps them academically to achieve the high standards that we set.
Thank you, Rob. Next we have Jim Smith.
Good morning. My name is Jim Smith. Let's talk about learning. I've been doing just that, talking about learning for years, and I'm not stopping now. There are many issues school board members must address, but really, two issues top all others. The first is to support high levels of learning for all students. The second is how to pay for it. We move, to move forward, we must avoid the contentious political battles that are raging around the education and find ways of working together. When it comes to providing high-quality, research-based learning choices, Forest Lake is a leader. Forest Lake staff live the district version of excellence for every student every day. If elected, I will support the current great things happening in Forest Lake schools and help to build a even stronger future. Yes, let's continue to talk about learning and find collaborative ways of moving forward as a community to support our students, their families, and their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Gail Tyson.
Hello, everyone. I am a current school board member, Gail Tyson, and I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for holding this forum today. I'm a proud mother of two Forest Lake graduate daughters. My husband Don and I live right here in Forest Lake. I have been privileged to serve as a school board member since 2012, leading our schools to become an environment where every child can succeed and feels prepared for life after high school. We have made significant improvements in our facilities and school curriculum that provide our students with a broad range of opportunities. This happens by listening to parents and students, working with my colleagues, and being engaged in the community. It really does take everyone working together for a child to succeed. School boards represent what is important to the community. I'm passionate about your child succeeding. My priority is to preserve what is working well and look forward to continuing the student-focused leadership that ensures success for all Rangers. I will provide proven leadership and continue and look forward to your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
And lastly, we have Daniel Tuat.
Hello, thank you so much for having us here. Want to thank you, Heidi, for moderating and the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Daniel Tuat, I'm a husband, father, electrician, lives in Forest Lake. I would say my why would be four reasons. One, school safety, right? No kid wants to feel unsafe going to school. Can expound on that later. The second would be academic excellence. One out of every two of our students are failing the state MCA test. And so I feel like this is unacceptable. There are, there are schools that have ninety-nine point five percent of their students passing or exceeding, and we're at like fifty percent right now. In science, I think it's forty-five percent. So I'd like to see academic excellence. And then also the wise spending. You know, we're overspending our budget by more than a million every year, and the general fund is about down to zero. So we need to sharpen the pencil on that. And last would be community representation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a written statement submitted by Julie Corcoran, who states that she's sorry that she cannot be here for this important forum today. So I'm going to read her submitted statement. My name is Julie Corcoran, and I've lived in the Forest Lake Area School District for thirty-eight years. I work in Minneapolis as an accounting controller at an architectural firm. I've been the treasurer for the school board for fifteen years. My background in finance has helped me understand the complexity of school district finances. It's been a privilege to serve on the Forest Lake Area School Board for four terms, and I would be honored to be elected for another four years. During my tenure, the school district has seen great progress. Our board worked extremely hard, excuse me, on a plan to pass the largest bond referendum in 2015 to modernize and improve all the buildings. Also, with the high school science addition and field house, we can offer even more opportunities for students. The latest addition of our track and football field has added to the pride that our students and community can feel when attending graduation and multiple supporting events. The school district is the heart and soul of the community it serves. If elected, I will continue to listen to input from community members and make sure that we, as a district, keep moving forward. And now we'll move into our first question. We'll be rotating who starts their response. And for this first question, we will start with Rob Raphael. So the question is, what are the three most pressing challenges facing the Forest Lake School District?
Thank you. For me, I think the number one thing we always have to focus on is academic achievement. And that's not just, we, our district beats state standards over and over and over. But that's not good enough. We always have to be looking and drilling down and making sure that every student gets the help they need if they're falling behind, right? Because sometimes averages can hide that. So academic achievement is number one. Second, we have to ensure that we have options for those kids so that you can tailor your education to the things you need. And one of the ways we do that is through our pathways for success, where students can help design their classes for how they want, what they want to do for a career later. And lastly, I'd say one of the things that we really have to work hard on, especially after COVID, is making sure that every student feels welcome and has a safe environment for their learning.
Thank you, Rob. And I will go next to candidate Tuat.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Well, I think high level, I look at things high level. It's all about preparing kids to become an adult, right? So we want to leave a better country for our kids than the one we grew up in, okay? We want our ceiling to be their floor. So I look at it as, what does it take to do life, okay? Three top issues. Probably what I discussed a minute ago would be the academic excellence. If you can't make change, you go to checkout and the kid, you know, you give him an extra dollar and he has to type it in a computer calculator to get his change out of that. Whoa. Right? Academic excellence, definitely number one. Spending, right? Money in, money out. Just, it has to equal or else you go negative very quickly, and then the taxpayers pay for that. And number two, and you can do that by being efficient. You don't have to cut programs to do that. Number three would be community representation, and I'm out of time, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we go to Gail Tyson.
Well, I want to answer your question directly. And three things that affect Forest Lake area schools and impact our financial status is equalization and per pupil funding formula that has not kept up with the rate of inflation. So it's hard for Forest Lake area schools to catch up that ground. And then our transportation sparsity has always been high on the list. And I have advocated at the Capitol for changes to this. We've had bills in our legislators to increase the amount that we receive. Counterintuitive is the fact that the funding formula is based on per pupil numbers and not miles driven. So for Forest Lake, being the third-largest district geographically, we drive about three hundred miles a day. So that, in essence, is passed on to our taxpayers and to our school district where we have to pay that funding to run our buses. Property equalization, we're always working on that with our legislators because it's very unfair formulas. And in Forest Lake, we know we don't have a lot of property wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we go to Mark Castle.
Yes, my top three things are the academic excellence and the fiscal responsibility and community involvement, especially the parents. As more and more parents get involved with their students and the rest of the community gets involved with the school, then we can figure out and work out problems that exist and to increase what's going well and make that even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Smith.
Thank you. Excuse me. If you hear an easy answer to any of these issues, there are no easy answers. Everything is difficult. Academic excellence is one of them. It is very, very difficult to deal with. There's a lot of moving parts to that, but that has to be the number one priority in the district. And I've been working in this field for thirty-five years, and that has been my life's work to bring that forward. Number two actually is tied into number one. Attendance is a big problem here and in the rest of the country. Forest Lake has seventy-one percent of their students are here ninety percent, ninety percent of the time or more. That leaves thirty percent approximately that their kids aren't in class for even ninety percent of the time. The research shows that without being in class, they're not going to do well in school. And reading is the third thing. Reading is so important to everything that we do. Forest Lake has been a leader in this area with the science of learning stuff in Minnesota. And we're on our way in reading, and I'm happy we're going there. Thank you.
Great. And lastly, Tessa Ann Thompson.
Yeah, I would, in my study and experience of what the three most pressing challenges are, is obviously, like most of us have said here, academic achievement and how do we get there? And I think a lot of other things tie into that, funding and what kind of programs and curriculums are we using. I would also say parental rights is an issue. That may not be everybody's experience, but I know that that is real. And last but not least, again, the funding, coming back to the academic achievement and what kind of programs are actually producing better academic skills for our students here? Because that is the utmost importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, first rebuttal.
I just want to kind of, I just wanted to answer the assertion that, from a funding perspective, that we're in financial danger. Forest Lake schools are not in financial danger. Over the years, we had built up a great reserve fund. Then when COVID hit and we needed additional resources for all the offline learning, we used some of it, we drove through that down. We're now building it back up. We are not in financial distress. We are in very good condition.
Thank you. Gail, first rebuttal.
Yes, I just want to talk a little bit about the MCA, the recent state scores that came out. Forest Lake area schools exceeds the state in all areas. We have some very impressive results in certain buildings and progress. But at the same time, we always know that there's places of concern, and we dig right into those areas and start working on them. We also have our own testing, which is called FastBridge, that is done on a regular basis throughout the school year.
Thank you. And Daniel.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to talk about the MCA, you know, the state average. A lot of talk about state average. Fifty-five percent of our students are failing the MCA science, right? The state is fifty-three percent. So we're two percent better. Exactly the same on reading and math. It's two percent different, two and a half. So we are doing better than them, but we're district number one hundred and ninety-three. So that means there's one hundred and ninety-two districts who are doing a better job, and we can step up the game.
Thank you. Jim, first rebuttal.
To the rest of the MCA as well, I've been looking at state data. Everywhere around the country, I've seen drops in Minnesota as well since COVID. And those numbers have been used to show how poor things are happening here. It's the same all over the country. The NEAP scores have dropped almost an identical amount over those years around the country. It needs to, we need to be realistic about what scores can do. Our attendance alone can knock us down quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tessa.
Thank you. I'd like to say that when we look at the test scores, they aren't everything, but they are a huge issue. And I, we can look at, I'm wondering, what ways are we looking at evaluating what's working in our schools to increase our students' achievement as opposed to the extra programs that we're spending a lot of money on that may not benefit everyone and actually create the equity that we are proposing to do?
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to the second question, which is related to financial challenges of the district. And our first respondent will be Jim Smith. So the question is, declining student enrollment has created financial challenges for the school district, including a one and a quarter million dollar budget reduction for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. What options would you consider to address these financial challenges? Start with Jim Smith.
That's a good question. The enrollment drop, I think, is pretty much a result of the demographics of an aging population. What I would look at is, it has to, learning has to be number one priority. For example, the middle school program right now, or I should call it the junior high. The junior high is moving to a middle school model. This is an excellent example of shifting things around based on brick and mortar decisions, but it's basically really good for learning. A middle school model is much higher, is an effectiveness rate than a junior high. So that's a positive move to save some money, but it's a positive move for education. And that's what I've been seeing in this district since I started going to board meetings a year and a half ago. There's lots of information out there all the time, if you just look for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we go to Tessa Ann Thompson.
I would ask that you repeat the question for me.
Absolutely, please. So declining student enrollment has created financial challenges for the school district, including a one and a quarter million dollar budget reduction for this twenty-four, twenty-five school year. What options would you consider to address the financial challenges?
I would say we have to look at what we are spending our money on very closely and allocate those funds towards academic achievement first and foremost, as well as our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we go to Daniel Tuat.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the declining student enrollment, right? Sixty-three percent of students in our district go to Forest Lake Public Schools. So that means almost, not almost half, but quite a few are going elsewhere, right? We're number one hundred and ninety-three as a district, just up the road, Mata Medai is number eleven, right? So that's a whole nother issue. But funding-wise, there are creative ways to save money, right? Collaboratives, working with multiple districts on a special program to save costs and something. You don't have to cut programs in order to save money, right? There's efficiency things, right? Administrative costs. DEI programs, they don't call them that, but they burn a lot of money, actually, and they don't add to academic success. The other thing would be creative funding sources, like, we have a lot of buildings, right? Hiring one out on a Sunday morning. There's a lot of churches that would love to meet, you know, they do that in Fridley. What about other people using our track and field, you know, renting it? Just ways to make extra money. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, Rob Raphael.
Yeah, thank you. I, just, as our demographics change, we've just seen less students coming in, and we have to adjust with that, right? I mean, I've worked in private industry my whole life. I was self-employed for a little while. But when things like that change, you have to adjust. And so for us, for us who are focusing on academics and choices for kids, we have to say, we've got this community school model that we are a hundred percent behind. How do we keep those community schools open and yet rearrange them so that we save costs that reflect the less students coming in? We are one of the best choices in this area for a school. And so that, that's number one in keeping those students coming here. But we also, I mean, this is just a natural thing we have to adjust for, and we are adjusting for it. I would also say we had a comparison to Mata Medai. Compare the number of administrators to Mata Medai here, and you'll find that we're really run a tight budget in this district.
Thank you. The question next goes to Gail Tyson.
Well, I just want to counter some of the conjecture, and I want to talk about the exciting news about Forest Lake High School's graduation rates, which rose six percent from twenty-twenty-two, from eighty-six percent to ninety-two percent in twenty-twenty-three. We offer fifteen AP courses at our high school, CIS courses nineteen, and industrial certifications are fourteen. We are doing a lot of things right in Forest Lake area schools. But to speak about the declining enrollment, we have already had a study done by a retired demographer. So we are well aware of the declining enrollment that school boards across the state are feeling. It's just low birth rates. Your kindergarten size isn't matching your graduation. So we have done a study for archapacity, and we are pushing, putting something forward to include our sixth grade in our middle school model. And then hence, we can be more efficient with our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. And the question next goes to Mark Castle.
Thank you. I was at the meeting where the demographer gave her two cents about why the enrollment is decreasing. Nothing was ever said about the academic scores. And my daughter was specifically looking to move out of the area she was because of the scores of that school system. And she said she would not go to Forest Lake, but she was looking at Mata Medai. She was looking at Centennial Lakes, and she was looking at Egan. All fiscal things need to be looked at, no matter if it's buying pencils or even the pay to the teachers, which is the most important pay that there is. And as we look into these issues and talk with the community, we can all come up with ways to decrease the costs and increase efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any rebuttals? Okay, moving on to question three, which will go first to Gail Tyson. The question is, considering the financial challenges facing the district, what experiences do you have that will help you, as a school board member, carry out your financial oversight responsibilities?
Well, as a school board member, I continue every year to advocate at the state Capitol with legislators. I have relationships built with them, and we talk about how our transportation funding costs us a lot of money out of our general fund and how if we could keep that money in our general fund instead of paying to run our buses, we could do a lot of things with that. I also advocate for equalization because in Forest Lake, we don't have a lot of property wealth and passing things along to taxpayers is difficult. It took us twelve years to build up our community support to pass our bond and levy in twenty-eighteen. And it's hard for Forest Lake residents. We have to really help with being at the Capitol, looking at ways to get things, pupil amounts increased and formulas changed. I also am very feudicious. I am on the finance committee. I like to look at our budget. A lot of school districts that are public schools held to a higher standard with their finances. Thank you.
The question next goes to Jim Smith.
Could you repeat the question again?
Yes. Considering the financial challenges facing this school district, what experiences have you had that will help you, as a school board member, carry out your financial oversight responsibilities?
Thank you. In education, I haven't been involved in budgeting, but I've been involved in trying to save programs, trying to advocate for programs at the legislative level, both for Forest Lake and for Centennial when I worked there as a teacher. The accuracy is a really important part of that. There are many unfunded mandates that have been, some of them have been taken care of. There's still others that cause the problems. And I like to point out that we are a group of people that follow laws and we don't make laws. So we have to live within these laws that we're presented with as a school board. Fiscally, personally, I'm quite conservative. I've been a teacher all my life, and there's never been a whole lot of money to burn. And I try to watch the bank and save for retirement. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The question next goes to Tessa Ann Thompson. Thank you. The question next goes to Tessa Antonson.
I'm going to ask that you repeat the question for me again, please. Thank you.
So considering the financial challenges facing this district, what experiences have you had that will help you, as a school board member, carry out your financial oversight responsibilities?
Well, I'd say life experience. I mean, I've never had a budget of millions of dollars sitting in front of me, but I've always been very acutely aware, growing up, using welfare and food stamps, being raised by a single mother. I am acutely aware of how important it is to prioritize your spending. I, I would think that we should be very transparent with the public. It's like we are going through this reimagined 2025. I have a fifth grader right now who that will greatly impact. And while I appreciate the things that I've heard about how it can be a positive for these kids, I also have concerns. And it is a K through six program that we have here currently that is part of a draw for me to this community. So I think being transparent with the public in where we are with money and using their input to help us prioritize where we should spend it.
Thank you. The question next goes to Mark Castle.
Well, I have been in manufacturing pretty much my whole life. I have been purchasing, I have done many things with the finance people, writing queries and stuff, and getting the data that they wanted from our system. So I, I do have experience with getting the information and providing it to the folks who would make decisions, and also having repercussions of those decisions and what it does to the business. The school is the business of educating the students. It's different than manufacturing, but nonetheless, the product is independent adult at the end of the run.
Thank you. And we'll take your rebuttal after all candidates are done. Yep. The, the question next goes to Daniel Tuat.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So, for me, I would say, I mean, you can't hit all the details in a minute, but what we, you can look at is mindset, right? We're teaching our kids how to think, not what to think, okay? And it's, it's a, it can go from top to bottom, any, anywhere in between. If you look at, let's say, school board, right? We're all running for school board. Is it the mindset of, is it a part-time job, or is it a civic duty, right? Now, in 2023, January, Luke and Kurt got into the school board, they got voted in, and they tried to change the school board pay to a dollar, right? So we could have extra money, you could hire a teacher with that money, you could have extra school supplies, right? They got voted down, right? January this year, they got voted down again. In March, the school board voted against them to raise their stipend. So they're giving themselves raises, and it's just, it's a mindset, right? I, I feel like if we look at this as, what is the goal? The goal is our kids. We put them priority, and then everything else flows from that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, to Rob Rafael.
Thank you. Yeah, we raised our stipend 2%. So, let me use an example. So, look, an example of, that member Tyson alluded to is that for busing, we've got a, a lot, one of the largest busing routes in the state. And that means it costs us a lot of money, and the state was not funding it properly because they were not doing it by miles driven. We went to the legislature, we worked with our legislatures over and over, pushing them, you need to get a bill. We worked with Bemidji. I testified in front of the committee about getting something in place that helps districts like ours get that busing paid for. And we got a bill through. It was not anywhere near what we needed, but the next year, then we were able to add through that, add to that. And that's how this work is done, is that you take the time, you understand the problem, and you work diligently over time to correct the problem. And we've made progress on the busing one, but it sure ain't there yet. And we have more work to do on that.
Thank you. And Gail had a rebuttal.
Yeah, so I just want to bring it back around to what I know to be true. We are guided by a strategic plan in Forest Lake area schools, where the majority is, the top priority is on academics. So we have new gateway courses at our Forest Lake area middle schools that uses a design thinking model. That building was been redesigned to work collaboratively in groups. We also have purchased a new English language arts curriculum, which has been vetted and part of the READ Act. And so we're very proud of that. You usually see a dip in scores with reading with a new curriculum, but we did not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next question, which will go first to Daniel Tuat. The question is, what strengths do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be a school board member?
Thank you. So, I want to honor everyone here, because we all have our ideas of, you know, policy, but everyone is, carries something to the table, right? And we all, and I want to honor you guys for, you know, 20 years of service, that kind of thing. I would say, myself, every day I'm going in to a facility, manufacturing, or, or plant, or something they have lying down, it's a million dollars an hour, we need to get this back up right now, okay? 10 people standing over your shoulder, when's it going to be running, right? You have to go in and, like, hold on, I don't even know what this thing does yet, let alone what's wrong, right? So give me a minute. You go in and you look at the system, and you say, okay, how does it work? What's working? What's not working? Now, you identified the problem, now you can fix the problem, right? So it's all about just focusing on finding the issue, like, the, the most pressing issue, fixing that, and then moving on to the less and less till you get a smooth learning machine. Thank you.
Thank you. The question next goes to Rob Rafael.
Thank you. For me, I, I mean, I've worked in software engineering and in machine vision, and now I'm working in medical device software. And, you know, just kind of being an outside, seeing how the outside world and business works helps bring kind of insight to the administration as they're making decisions. I bring that. I also bring a lot of community volunteering time. I've worked with the Cub Scouts, and I was in the Drumline Parent Group and a lot of events like that. And I think, another thing that brings experience to me is I've had three kids, one who's going to graduate this year, who have gone through this district. All three kids are very different, have very different needs, and I have watched how this school district has addressed their needs over and over and over. And so, and lastly, I would say I've got a lot of experience on the board. I have watched how this district started out with a funding scheme that was just not great, and we've moved it towards a very successful way that we do our finances.
Thank you. The question next goes to Jim Smith.
Thank you. I've worked for 15 years as, in Centennial as a classroom teacher. Beyond that, I worked with Centennial as the, as the, the middle school assessment coordinator. And we worked with building professional learning communities in that building. As a result of my work there and in another school I worked with, I helped two schools win academic awards that we were recognized for. Moving beyond that, I was then offered a position to, to train teachers around the country from a company called Solution Tree. You had to have worked in an awards-winning school in order to get that offer. And I worked with schools from California to New Jersey for five or six years, helping teachers to write assessments, to look at standards, and to improve the quality of learning in their schools. I've been in public schools since I was five years old, so that's almost six decades of being in public schools, and I can't seem to get out of it, and here I am trying to get it in again. Thank you.
Thank you. Question next goes to Gail Tyson.
So what makes me a unique and brings my strong abilities to Forest Lake area schools as a school board member is I'm a good listener, and I'm very passionate about listening and being out and engaged in my community. I'm at all the events. I'm kind of a grassroots school board member. I came up through the ranks, working at Scandia Elementary as a Title I teacher. I was on the PTO there. We built a new playground. I went to the Forest Lake Middle School, and I was on the PTO there as well, working and meeting and doing those grassroots things, grassroots things with parents. I'm also a former parent awareness quality coach and an advocate for state courts as a guardian of light them. I think good listening is really one of my assets. I hear that from the community all the time. They seek me out to talk to me and have these conversations that are important for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. The question next goes to Tessa Antonson.
As my unique qualities, as a nurse of 28 years, I've been in the service of other people and the advocate for their care. And being a nurse creates a position of being in the middle between what you're being asked to do, making sure you understand why you're being asked to do it, and then advocating for the person for whom these directives are being put. So I am also a holistic coach, so I have experience working with people, very strong, good listening skills. And I believe that it is important to listen to the people when they have concerns and understand that they are real, and not just bypass things by focusing on the positive all the time. We have to take a look at both sides of things. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, the question goes to Mark Castle.
Thank you. I am largely self-educated. I read manuals and things like this. That's how, when, at one point, my employers discovered that I was a geek, they moved me from being the CNC department to being the ID, IT department, doing the purchasing, doing order entry, and all these other different things, because I read and learned the system and took it upon myself to figure these things out. And many of the subjects that my children were learning, they actually went out and saw some YouTube videos of some very good people that are educating on YouTube. And four-point, better than four-point grade point averages were achieved in that, by doing that. And so just looking at things from an individual perspective, and, and how people can learn are, is, is where my strengths are.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question, and it's going to go, oh, sorry. Yes, yes.
One of the things that came, one of the things that came up was a statement about transparency with the school district. And one thing I want to say is that as a board member, I am really proud of the work that I have done. And I'm proud of the work that our school district has done. And as far as transparency goes, I want people to see the work we're doing. I want people to see those kids thriving. I want people to see how hard we work to get the kids that are falling behind the help they need. I'm proud of our work, and so transparency is easy.
Thank you. Okay, next question, and we'll start with Mark Castle. The question is, some members of the community have expressed concerns about what is being taught in the classrooms. This has become a point of contention at school board meetings. As a board candidate, do you have any concerns about what is being taught in the classrooms? And can you state why or why not?
Yes, I do have concerns. And I've talked to many people while I'm out campaigning, and they have concerns too, that there are things that are in the school that actually don't have anything to do with the academic success of the students. And all of the programs that don't have viability with somebody after they come out of the school system for their being able to get a job, or be an entrepreneur, or whatever it is they decide to do, they're, they don't follow along with actual education. So my concern with any of the curriculum that is not academic achievement is that it, perhaps we need to look at it and either eliminate it or downsize it, and then increase the size of the things that have to do with life skills, so that the students can be prepared for adulthood.
Thank you. The question next goes to Gail Tyson.
Well, we work very hard at our culture and building community in Forest Lake area schools. We have soft start days, so that our eighth graders and our ninth graders, I'm sorry, seventh graders and ninth graders at the high school can get that peer-to-peer support with our web leaders, where everyone belongs, and our link leaders at the high school. We have an incredible team of teachers that work hard on the standards that we get from MDE that are embedded in our curriculum. They are an exceptional group of educators, and they're both professional and exceptional in that they, most of, the majority of our teachers hold a degree in the master's area. I think that we are transparent, and anybody can come and be on our curriculum committee if they want to learn more about how these decisions are made. They can go into their classroom and discuss the curriculum with their teacher. They can go in and talk to their building principal. We are transparent, we are open. I hear the complaints from people that aren't willing to do that. So I am always welcoming people into our buildings to do that. Thank you.
The question next goes to Rob Rafael.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a lot of outside organizations and national organizations that have never been to Forest Lake are putting out information saying that schools are teaching all these scary subjects, and it's a bunch of baloney. Our schools, we have shot, we have a number of tech classes, we excel at our science classes, we have high-level math classes, our AP classes are through the roof, and our students do great at them. When a student leaves our, our school, they're ready. And we give them all these different options. And a couple other people were talking about our curriculum in the early grades for reading that we're working on. This is important work, and it happens through the curriculum committee, which is open to the public. If you want to have a voice in our curriculum, what we teach, you can be on the curriculum committee, you can hear about all these different reading programs, and it doesn't stop there. It goes to the teachers and the principals and the parents. They all have a voice in what we teach, and it shows.
Thank you. The question that goes, next goes to Jim Smith.
Thank you. I have been on the curriculum committee here for the last year and a half. And it is a very good place to have discussions about this stuff. It's not done in secret at all. And I also want to point out that we are in an institution that follows laws. We on the school board and members of the education community here don't make laws, we follow laws. Part of the laws are the standards in Minnesota for all the different subject areas. And let me give you just a quick example. From English, language arts, math, and science, there are 425 pages of standards. You can find them online, which means there are probably 2,000 to 3,000 standards that, that teachers are responsible by law to teach in class. Now, obviously, they can't get to all those, and they don't, but there are things to be put in place by the teaching and learning department and the superintendent's office to make sure we stay on that track of, of staying on the standards.
Thank you. Thank you. The question next goes to Daniel Tuat.
Yes, ma'am, I just realized there's two cameras, don't know which one to look at. But that's right. I'm just, again, it's back to mindset and, and looking at things objectively. I think a lot of parents are upset, worried, scared of, whatever you want to call it. I think Elon Musk termed it the best, called the woke mind virus, right? You can call it whatever you want. It goes back to, and what was, what was spoken here earlier was we actually do, are doing a lot of right things in the school district. I mean, we have carpentry programs, shop programs, like, who has auto shop anymore, right? Forest Lake does. We have woodworking and metalworking, right? All these kind of things. Students will actually build a house and sell it. I mean, that is awesome, right? There's a lot of really good things. I think parents are just worried about indoctrination creeping into education. We want to be educated, not indoctrinated, right? So it just has, it's something that you need constant vigilance to keep those raunchy books out of libraries, to keep, you know, just, just goofy stuff being taught. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Tessa Antonson.
I would ask you to repeat the full question for me again, please.
So some members of the community have expressed concerns about what is being taught in the classrooms. This has been a point of contention at school board meetings. As a board candidate, do you have concerns about what's being taught in the classroom, and why or why not?
I do have some concerns, yes. I mean, I've had personal experience with some of the concerns that people in the community have also expressed to me. I believe that when we, when we step foot into a school building, school property, venue, any whatsoever, everyone should be held to the same standards of behavior and accountability. And I don't believe that that is happening. And I think when we have children that come home and say there's repeated outbursts happening in their classroom, and you don't hear anything about it from the teacher, and you don't hear anything about it from the teacher, and then you're being told your child is having trouble focusing, I think there's things that need to be addressed. I think that's where that transparency comes in. And I think there's work to be done there. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question, which will go first to Tessa Antonson. "What strategies will you use to engage teachers, students, families, and community members in discussions regarding the direction and policies of this district?"
Well, I would say at this point in the game, we should be using more social media outreach to our community. I think we, I know this school does a survey with parents and households about how they feel about their school is supporting their children. I think we should be having the kids do that as well and in some kind of ongoing, frequently measurable fashion so that we can get real-time feedback from the students, the teachers, and the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question next goes to Mark Castle.
Sorry, please repeat the question.
Yeah. "What strategies will you use to engage teachers, students, families, and community members in discussion regarding the direction and policies of the district?"
Well, I don't really like the word strategies, but people need to be open and honest about their feelings and how they think that things are going. And so with open and honest discussions, if that's going to be called a strategy, that's what I would use.
Thank you. Question now goes to Rob Rafael.
Thank you. I think one of the ways that we started doing that is through what we call the strategic plan. And like when we initially put our strategic plan together, we had, I bet we had 50, 60 people from the public come in, and we had a, a three-day discussion about where we want to focus our efforts in this school district from the public's perspective, what we wanted our mission to be. And we have renewed that year after year after year. And out of that, that strategic plan comes a bunch of action items and things that we want to make sure that we're doing. In fact, we were just at a fundraiser for TEFLA. TEFLA came out of that, out of that, one of those original strategic plans. So that is one of the critical, there's a lot of different ways we interact with parents, but that is one of the critical ways that we set the overall direction of our district and what we see as our vision for our kids.
Thank you. The question next goes to Daniel Tuat.
Yes, ma'am. It's actually something I'm passionate about. The, I love that old TV quote, "We have the technology," right? So, simple things like, okay, so we're talking about parent, community, teacher, school board involvement, right? Collaboration. The magic is where it happens is communication, right? Everyone talking together. It's open lines. So what can we do to do that, right? Simple things like, I just started a YouTube channel. I would like to take every school meeting and do a five-minute recap at the end of it, right? Not everyone has two hours to watch a meeting, but you can jump on, find out what happened, what's upcoming, boom, right? Things like Twitter, right? It's a digital town square. You can collaborate with the community, have ideas, have, you know, when you're representing someone, you're literally representing their thoughts and ideas. So we need to be in constant communication. It's super important. So yes, a lot of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. The question next goes to Gail Tyson.
Yes, well, my strategy will continue as it's always been, to be out in my community, to be at games, to be where they are, be at the music concerts, go to their PTO meetings, be where the community is and my constituents, and be very accessible to them. I had a conversation that went 15 minutes at the football game a Friday ago. I also run into parents and constituents in Target. Wherever I am, I'm always accessible. If you want to grow honesty and grow your trust, you need to be out in the community, you need to be at events, you need to be engaging with the students and the parents and everyone in our Forest Lake Ranger community.
Thank you. And lastly, to Jim Smith.
Thank you. When I started looking into the district almost two years ago now, actually, I started going to listing sessions. These are offered before board meetings. The first board meeting in the month where community members can come in, give feedback. The superintendent is writing, I think he writes a column every so often in the Times paper. Online is a great resource for the Forest Lake schools' community. Also, I do have a little concern about social media as being an avenue for this conversation. X or Twitter, as it used to be known as, is an example. We probably, I did some quick math, we probably have close to 16,000 people in the district on Twitter out of 50,000. However, Target, Best Buy, General Mills, Medtronics, United Health Group, 3M have all stopped working on Twitter. And the statement from 3M was, "We, like many other companies, want to create a safe environment for dialogue." And that's the key, a safe environment for dialogue, where we can have these important discussions and move forward.
Thank you. And a rebuttal from Rob Rafael.
Well, it's kind of a rebuttal. Number one, I wanted to agree with member Tyson because that is, that is the core of it. It's just being available for people. And I just had a discussion with, somebody who was responsible for some hockey, and he was having a concern about working with the district with communications. And that conversation is critical. And I'd also like to say that we have a lot of social media going out as a school district. And it's, yeah, if you want to, if you're interested in sports, academics, all those things. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our last question for today, and then we'll have closing remarks. So the last question first is going to go to Daniel Tuat. And the question is, "The number-two goal of the strategic plan of the Forest Lake School Board is to reach, attract, develop, and retain highly qualified educators. However, Forest Lake teacher salaries are lower than neighboring and comparison districts. Given this pay disparity, why should teachers stay in Forest Lake?"
Thank you for that question. This is huge. Teachers, policemen, firefighters, and military are some of the most underpaid employees in our, individuals in our nation, right? We have an issue, and it is called inflation. And how has, in the last 10 years, has the school board, or the school district dealt with this? Our property taxes have been 7%, 10 years ago, 7% of the operating budget for Forest Lake was property taxes, like levies. Today, it's 21% of the budget is off property taxes, right? So in 2023, last year, Minnesota statute 126(c)(17), right? Oh, time's up. We'll get into that later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The question next goes to Rob Rafael.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, definitely. "The number-two str, goal of the strategic plan of Forest Lake School Board is to attract, develop, and retain highly qualified educators. However, Forest Lake teacher salaries are lower than neighboring and comparison districts. Given this pay disparity, why should teachers stay in Forest Lake?"
Thank you. I would also point out that our administration costs are lower as well, or salaries are lower as well. It's a big problem. I mean, we've got a great curriculum department. And, and our new teachers that come in oftentimes come in for four, five years and then go to a higher-paying district because we are so good at training our incoming teachers. And so it's a real problem. We've had it in our strategic plan. We try to increase it as much as we can, but we've got these fixed budget constraints where we can only go so much. So that means we have to really ensure that we try to give our teachers a very positive work environment and do other things like that to keep them on board. And we do, and a lot of teachers do stay on, but it's a critical problem. I really think that the state has to increase funding to our district so that we can kind of bring those salaries up.
Thank you. The question next goes to Mark Castle.
Thank you for the question. I have talked to several people that used to be teachers, and they said they could, they wouldn't come in and be a teacher now for anything. And so the teachers, in order to maintain their presence in the same, same school district, this one here, or anywhere where they are, they need to know that what they are doing is valued and that they can work with the community and the school board and whoever needs to be worked with in order so that they're, they can be productive and happy with what they're doing. And we should be able to work on getting their pay to be higher, just like other places. But we do have fiscal problems that block or hinder that. So we need to work on that.
Thank you. The question next goes to Tessa Antonson.
Can you please repeat it? I'm trying to.
"The number-two goal of the strategic plan for the Forest Lake School Board is to attract, develop, and retain qualified educators. However, Forest Lake teacher salaries are lower than neighboring and comparison districts. Given this pay disparity, why should teachers stay in Forest Lake?"
Well, I think it's an excellent question. And that is something that is of utmost importance to look at because it directly affects the academic achievement that we need to also improve in this district in order to get people to stay and more people to enroll in our schools. If that's what we want, we need to make that a priority. I, being a nurse of 28 years, I see some similarities from the healthcare system to the educational system, where the teachers are the backbone, such as like nurses are kind of the backbone or a big part of it in the system that they work in. And when they do not feel valued, and when they are not paid compensated well, and when they do not feel safe in their classrooms or safe to speak up about things they disagree with, they will leave. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Jim Smith.
Hi, thank you. How to retain teachers? That's interesting. When I started in Centennial like 40 years ago, we were hemorrhaging teachers out of Forest Lake into Centennial because our pay was quite a bit better than we're out here. It seems like that's changed. It seems like a lot of teachers are looking at Forest Lake, and it's got to be for something other than the pay. I would like to pay teachers more. But that is an advocacy, advocacy issue. Teachers are looking for support from administrators, like we heard about earlier. They're looking for a leadership that helps develop other leaders within the district, which is, Forest Lake is doing that. They're looking for a learning model that works, that fits in with data, with best practices in education and research-based learning. And I'm looking for people to stop the hate. There's been a lot of that generated against teachers for a lot of pretty fictitious things over the years, and that's need to stop as well. There's a lot of great things happening here, and teachers are recognizing that. If we could pay them a little more, that'd be good too.
Thank you. And lastly, Gail Tyson.
Yes, when we go to settle our teachers' contract, there's one thing that I always say to myself. It's more than we can afford, but unfortunately, it's way less than they deserve. So I want to repeat that in Forest Lake area schools, we have a team of educators that is both exceptional and professional, with the majority holding a master's degree. We have strong academics, and it's mostly due in part to our strong teaching force. Our educators, our retired educators come back to sub for us. When we have retirements every year, we have teachers retiring with 20 to 30-plus years in Forest Lake area schools because there is that strong leadership, there is that camaraderie, there is PLC time and support for what they're doing in the classroom, having time to share ideas and how to grind down and drill down on what is best practice. So I'm proud of our teachers. We have such a strong group. They are admired by parents throughout the district, as well as myself and our whole school board. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our closing statements, which we will do in reverse alphabetical order by last name. Each candidate will have one minute for their closing statement to summarize their qualifications and positions. And we will start with Daniel Tuat.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So property taxes, tax levies, right? Is what got me into the race. The 2018, we voted as a community to almost double our tax levy to support our schools. I actually voted for it, right? But I voted for one tax levy. I didn't vote for two. The eight years is coming up very soon. The current school board is talking about, there's a new authority from the legislature that they can just take a vote of seven and completely re-up the levy without bringing it to the citizens to vote. And I feel that's wrong. There's a team of us called, we call ourselves Team Tank because that's the acronym of our last name. We're running against this, to stop this. Because we feel like that's reaching in, grabbing your ballot, and voting yes for you, and I don't agree with that at all. So Team Tank, Daniel Tuat is my name, and I would just love your vote on November 5th. Email me, daniel.fls@proton.me, or give me a call, and we can chat, 763-568-5759. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we go to Gail Tyson.
Yes. Together and with your vote, we can preserve what's working well in Forest Lake area schools and continue that upward trajectory of building our students' academic futures. I am passionate about your child succeeding. I always listen to parents, students, and community voices. I have seen our district grow and improve since being elected in 2012. To this, I'm very proud. We've also faced challenges such as working through COVID and distance learning, but we are recovering from that, and our scores show this too. Our recent MCA results show we exceed this, exceed the state average in all areas. My passion for public education extends beyond our school board. I also serve on Northeast Metro Intermediate Board. This is a member district board that focuses on serving our special needs students in a level-four setting. I was also elected by my East Metro peers to be a director of Minnesota School Board Association. This has given me a leadership role in discussing policies and issues facing public schools and learning firsthand what is working well in other districts and across the state. I am your partner and proven leader in education. Thank you for your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. And Jim Smith.
Okay, thank you. I know how learning works, okay? I, I have proven track record of growing it in, in many different places. And I'm also not objective. I will admit that upfront. If it doesn't, you know, if it's not something that works in learning, if it's not research-based, if there's not data behind it, I'm not objective about that. We need those pieces in place to make sure that the learning program in this district is the best it can be. And there's a lot of good stuff in place in that, in that regard. I like to build coalitions, and this district is a place to do that. We've got a director of curriculum and instruction who's top-notch. I'd put him up against anybody in the country on how to improve learning in this district. This is also why I'm a member of the Ranger team, running for school board. I'm working with these two and Julie. They're a heck of an act to follow. And they've done a lot of great work supporting this district over the years. And I'm just, a pleasure that I can join them on the ticket. Thank you very much, jimsmith.com. JimSmithSchoolBoard.com, I'm sorry, is my website.
Thank you. And next, Rob Rafael.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to point out that Daniel from the Tank team waited till his rebuttal or till the last statement in the, in the debate to say that he's in favor of cutting funding to the schools. And I'd love, I would have liked to have heard through this debate how they would support their academics and paying teachers and all that stuff with a big, major cut to our, our funding. But that, that aside, I just want to, number one, say how proud I am of serving the Forest Lake schools, being on the board, and being a part of all this incredible work. The proudest day of my year is handing out diplomas at the end of the year and seeing that excitement of kids and parents as they're in the stadium and thinking about the future before them and knowing that we have done everything we're able to give them the start in life that they need, and I couldn't be prouder of my work.
Thank you. Mark Castle.
Thank you for inviting us to this forum. I, my goal is the academic achievement, and again, I'm largely self-educated. So I, there's many things that we can do to help the children actually do that for themselves, along with the classroom work. You can reach me at castlecampaign@protonmail.com. You can call me at 612-240-8803. And give me your suggestions and give me your concerns. And I'd like to work together with all the folks out there to improve the school system so we can have educated students.
Thank you. And lastly, Tessa Antonson.
Hi. Well, first of all, I would like to thank you, Heidi, for moderating this forum and to the League of Women. and to the League of Women Voters for hosting us today. It's been quite an experience. I am Tessa Antonson. I am the A in Team Tank with Daniel Tuat, Tessa Antonson myself, Laura Durangu, and Mark Castle here. We are advocating for change and for high level of transparency and communication with the community. I, as Laura has said in the past and Daniel just now, would not approve a vote to renew a levy without public input. We are also highly focused on academic achievements. The fact is that in the middle school, math is at 56% and in high school, math is at 31.6%. And respectively, 21% of households strongly or disagree that teachers in that school care about their kids. And I think while we do many good things well in our schools, we also need to acknowledge these points and work at changing them and improving them. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for the Forest Lake School Board. Thank you all for your participation. Our website is l w v dash w b l a dot org and has listings for all of our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for these forums. You can review the recording of this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel of Women Voters, Whiteboro Lake Area. You can look for it also on your local cable channel and at the time of your choosing. Thank you and remember to vote. Early voting is September 20th to November 4th and Election Day is November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.